And the products that were put on the table by their very selves were good products. It was okay to be able to reach out and create an opportunity for many people to get mortgages. But at the same time, we needed to have the constraints and restraints. So therefore, to my market folk, to my product givers, there needs to be an education process on how you use them, how you look at people, how you build people's credit to get them to the point. So, Mr. Chairman and CEO of the National Urban League, organizations like yourself and others can now be players because you need to be right in the midst of the dual education of the industry and of the consumer. And it's always good when you have institutions like the Urban League, like the organization that Theola Pettaway represents in Houston, Texas, to be talking to bankers and consumers, speaking the same language so that we don't have the ability or the crisis that we see going on now. And I just want to end on this note. I heard that there was a word about bankruptcy. One of the holding points of this bailout language is to ensure for many of us, and I was just in a discussion this morning, that there be a provision to allow homeowners to go into bankruptcy, and the bankruptcy courts restructure the loans so that the homeowner can save that house. I think that is an imperative in any bailout that we sign onto.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, we want to thank our first panel, Franklin Raines, Ken Wade, Larry Parks, Eric Eave. Let's give them a big hand. Stacy Tisdale, are you going to stay with us? Let's give them a big hand. They're going to excuse themselves and we're going to move to the second panel. Once again, let's thank them for being with us this morning. Let me, as they depart, take this opportunity once again to welcome Mayor William Bell of Durham, North Carolina, Ms. Marcia Griffin, President of Home Free USA, and Mayor Wayne Hall of Hempstead if they would join us on the stage. How are you? Wayne Hall. Oh, he did? Oh, okay. Thank you. Let me continue over here with the audience questions. Over here to my right, who is next?
Chase Key. He's an 11th grader from Northwood Silver Springs, Maryland.
11th grader. Let's give him a hand. An 11th grader. Thank you.
Hello. I just have a quick question. I was wondering, how does the fact that we will have a new president impact the mortgage crisis? How does the fact that we will have a new president impact the mortgage crisis?
Good. The question he asked is how does the fact that we have a new president affect the mortgage crisis? Who wants to take a shot? Ms. Solis? Ms. Widener?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think, no matter who's president, we will be left with, and that president's administration will be left with, solving this mortgage crisis on a loan by loan and borrower by borrower situation. One of the points that has been made very clearly is no matter what you do in the bailout to help get the financial institutions liquid again, getting cash flowing again, does not solve the problem at the borrower level, at the property level. And there has to be a solution for every borrower and every property to stop these foreclosures. And one of the things that we have developed, and there's an item in your brochure, in your program, is a platform that will give the counselors the tools they need to evaluate the condition of the borrower and the condition of the property. Because every situation is different, every solution will have to be specifically designed for the specific situation. So no matter who's president, they're going to have to support and lead a solution house by house, borrower by borrower, and the local communities will need to reach out to that president for help in their collaborative efforts to bridge the difference between what the borrower can pay and what the obligation is on the mortgage. It's going to take a collaborative effort, and the new president will have to be a collaborator.
Let's thank this young man, 11th grader, for asking that question. We appreciate you so much. Let's go to the next questioner.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the panel for coming out to give us this body of information. My name is Reggie Vaughn, and I'd like to direct this to Mr. Morio and Ms. Jackson Lee. I'm a victim of, I guess you could say, mortgage fraud, predatory lending, but unlike a lot of folks that you like to cite that didn't read the fine print, I've had the opportunity to bring a lot of these folks to justice. What I'm now attempting to do is pierce the corporate veil. Where you're based in Texas is Aegis Mortgage. I don't know if you're familiar, they're in Houston, Texas. Anyway, a lot of folks speak about Wall Street, but they don't really know what's going on. So when you asked about education, I don't know everything, but I am familiar with my case. Cerberus Capital Management is a major corporation that generates $160 billion a year. They have over $40 billion worth of assets. They own Aegis Mortgage, UC Lending, ResCap, Residential Capital Finance.
Question, if you could.
Well, the bottom line is, there's someone on this panel that can help me pierce the corporate veil, since everyone seems to be befuddled and wondering where they took the money. These folks own also GMAC. They have been cited with predatory lending, mortgage fraud. They're one of the 14 lenders that NAACP is doing a class action suit. I have undeniable, graspable evidence. I need to bring them to justice. Can anyone help me with that? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your question, Representative Jackson Lee.
I'm familiar with most of the companies that you have mentioned, and as I indicated initially in my remarks, this is going to be an embracing and expansive response to the difficulty and devastation that you face. And I apologize for a system that was actually broken and that individuals, credible individuals like yourself, became victims. Let me combine the answer that I would have given the young man from the 11th grade to say that with President Barack Obama, you will have someone who understands the balancing, if you will, of a victim and the need that you have to restore communities. With President Obama, you would have a reinforcement of the community block grants, a better system of accessing credit, that maybe you were victimized because it was predatory lending. What I would say to you is that we're now on the verge. I leave here in a few minutes to meet with the Judiciary Committee to establish our mark on the bailout bill. The number one issue that I have is a wide-reaching investigation and criminal prosecution down to the last person that has been engaged in these practices. Whether or not your particular lawsuit becomes a cornerstone to this expansive language, what I would say to you is that all of these small companies, and as we well know, as someone told me in my district, there are good mortgage brokers and there are bad ones. I don't necessarily want to wipe out the mortgage broker industry. There may be mortgage brokers here. I know a lot of African-Americans are in that business. But I do know a lot of people were victimized by unscrupulous practices by those who are just out throwing mortgages into the streets and the wind, and then captured people in what we call the accelerated rate. We had hearings in New York where you started with a $2,000 mortgage and accelerated it to $6,000, almost impossible to pay. So what I can say to you is, I am committed to massive criminal investigations, court proceedings, charges and prosecutions, and jail time and criminal penalties if necessary. With respect to your answer, as I conclude my remarks, and thank the audience and thank Mark, as I may listen to one more question, because I'm going back to this meeting, it would be helpful for us to have information about lawsuits like this and to be able to see whether or not during the Judiciary Committee, as we move into next year, those of us who may be reelected, that we have massive hearings on the criminal aspect of the mortgage foreclosure debacle and the victims like yourselves having the opportunity to present your case before the Judiciary Committee.
Thank you very much. And we understand if you've got to excuse yourself for those discussions and negotiations. We want to thank you for being here. We want to now present Marcia Griffin, President of Home Free USA, who's going to be joining our panel, as well as the mayor of the city on the Red River down in Louisiana, the mayor of the city of Shreveport, Honorable Cedric Glover. Please greet them as they join us.
Wonderful to see you. Thank you for your service.
Let me ask the audience for one minute, because I think we've now got three mayors with us who lead cities in this nation. And I want to give each of them an opportunity to give us a perspective. You're on the ground, you're close to the people. People's first stop is many times City Hall. Mayor, talk a little bit about what you're seeing in your own city about this problem.
Thanks, Mark. And I want to again thank the CBC for inviting me to be a part of this panel, which is a very, very important discussion that we're having today in view of all the things that happen in this country. My name is Bill Bell, and I have the privilege of serving as mayor of the city of Durham, North Carolina. And Mark, I just need to take a minute or two to say a little bit about the city. Durham is the fourth largest city in the state of North Carolina behind Charlotte, Raleigh, and Greensboro. Durham is a city that has a very historic African-American heritage. It's a city that's transformed from tobacco, textiles, into a city of high-tech, city of medicine, biotech, Fortune 500 companies. And while Durham has not seen the crisis in foreclosures that we've seen in other areas of this country, it's not been immune from it. And the reason I say that is that if you look at the background of Durham, it's the home where North Carolina Mutual Life Insurance Company, the largest insurance, black-owned insurance company in the country. We've had, up until March, two African-American banks, Mutual Community Savings Bank, and it's merged now into Mechanics &amp; Farmers Bank, one of the largest African-American banks in the state, 100 years old, never had a losing history in terms of returns. That type of setting, but still, we aren't immune from it. And what you find is that in Durham particularly, we've seen between 2006, 2007, foreclosures have risen by more than 9%. 73% of the neighborhoods in Durham County had a home in foreclosure in the first 10 months of 2007. And in Durham County, approximately 78% of the homes in default of foreclosure are designated in by African-Americans. And a study that we saw in 2007 found that almost African-Americans were probably four times more likely to pay a high-cost interest rate than were non-Hispanic whites in Durham. So we have not been immune from it. The things we've talked about at the national level, we've seen it at the micro level. But what is important, I think, that we all need to recognize, that in the early '60s, '50s, '40s, because Durham had financial institutions, by and large, African-Americans relied on those institutions for homeownership. Mechanics &amp; Farmers Bank, and I just talked to our people the other day, foreclosure's been a very small part of their portfolio. Where we found the largest foreclosures was Wells Fargo. We've had GMAC. We've had the Bank of China. We've had other large banks that have really been participating in these high foreclosures. So again, what we're seeing nationally, we're seeing on a small scope, but you would not expect to see it to the degree that we've seen it, given the type of financial support that we have in that community.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Hall.
Yes, good morning. I want to thank the CBC for inviting me for this panel.
Speak a little louder. Yeah, that mic might be...
Bring the mic up a little closer. Good morning. My name is Wayne Hall. I'm from the incorporated village of Hempstead in the state of New York. Hempstead is located nine miles east of New York City. It is the largest minority village in the state of New York. We have, according to 2000 Census, we had a population of 56,000. But we all know that our population had ballooned up to 70,000, and that's almost, what, five or six times more than what that vice presidential candidate has in her little city? Anyway, the village is made up 55% African-American, 30% Latino, and 15% white and other Asian. We found that this mortgage crisis had severely hit my community, because it usually has a profound impact on minority communities. Out of 8,500 residential properties in the village of Hempstead, approximately 600 homes are in foreclosure, which comes to about 3%. This has a financial impact on our community because, you know, when the banks foreclose these properties, they don't take care of it. So what happens is that the village has to hire more employees to take care of the aesthetics of the village. We also, one thing good about the village of Hempstead, we definitely, we don't rely on the sale taxes and the mortgage taxes, but we do rely on real property taxes. When the banks take over these properties, they are always late in handing in their, paying their taxes, and that creates a cash flow for our village residents. Every day when I see the residents in Hempstead, you know, walking and having problems with trying to meet ends, have ends meet, it's a devastating thing here in our community. And we're hoping that Congress can come up with a plan that will alleviate the suffering that I see happening in the village of Hempstead.
Good. Thank you very much. We're going to go to Mayor Glover, and then I have a question for Ms. Solis. Mayor Glover.
Thank you, Mayor Morio. It's a pleasure to be here. I thank the members of the Congressional Black Caucus for giving me the honor of being here today to serve on this panel. I am Cedric Glover, the mayor of the city of Shreveport. We are the third-largest city in the state of Louisiana. We sit some 200 miles north of the Gulf of Mexico, about 300 miles driving distance from the city of New Orleans, and we're about eight miles from the Louisiana-Texas border. And our population in our metro region is about 350,000. One of the things that is fortunate about Louisiana right now is that we rank in the bottom 10 in the numbers of foreclosures that are taking place right now across the country. But one of the things that's always been one of the hallmarks of Louisiana is that the economic downturns generally come to us last, but we're also usually the last to recover. But we are having people who are beginning to deal with the issues and challenges that so many of you are also facing around the country. And the one thing I think that many people who I come across every day in my city point out is that they have seen what was something well-intentioned corrupted. One of the goals and objectives of the Clinton administration, ironically spilled over to the Bush administration, was the creation of an ownership society, increasing the percentage of African-Americans who own their homes. And we've seen those numbers come to percentages that are unprecedented in our country's history. Now, the unfortunate thing is that I think as we began to try and aspire to the American dream of owning a home, there were others who just simply saw a new market, not only to be tapped, but also to be taken advantage of. And I think that's the unfortunate dimension that we're seeing throughout so much of what we see across Shreveport, across Louisiana, and across this country. Individuals who, as one of the earlier panelists pointed out, would have qualified for prime loans as opposed to subprime loans, were directed to inferior products. Individuals who ended up needing homes probably in 100 to 150 to $200,000 range for a city like Shreveport, ended up being encouraged to take that big leap and step into 250 and 300-plus thousand-dollar homes, not understanding that that initial low term that they signed for would balloon in the coming years. And so it's a challenge. One of the things that we've done, though, that I would share with you, that's been highly innovative for the city of Shreveport, is that we have a lease-to-purchase program that has been highly effective in that we have lease payments that last from one to three years, and then the fourth year, at a minimum, we put those individuals in a position to be able to sign a mortgage and become a homeowner. And so it has worked for us well, and it's been highly successful.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. Let's give these mayors a big round of applause. We're going to get back to the audience. Ms. Solis, you and Enterprise Community Partners are also on the ground in local communities across the nation, and you all have been in the forefront of trying to create an affordable housing regime in this nation. Talk a little bit about your thoughts about solutions for the crisis.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for inviting us to be here today. Just picking up on some of the important points that Mayor Hall raised, much of the focus of the debate to date and the solutions have been on keeping families in their homes, and obviously that is the number-one priority. But what we've learned after 30 years or so of coming back from the damaging effects that redlining had and things that Congressman Waters mentioned in the past, is that whole communities are really suffering, and concentrations of these foreclosed properties are really turning into a tsunami, mostly targeted at low-income communities of color. And that has been the focus that we've been working on, and that is driving both policy solutions and local pilot programs, working with nonprofits, partners like the Urban League, Neighbor Works America, and with mayors and states around the country to try to develop large-scale solutions. One of our strongest champions in this effort was Congresswoman Waters. Without her efforts, we would not have the $4 billion that are coming to mayors and states and hopefully local communities in the next 30 to 60 days to help address this challenge. With 2 million-plus foreclosures underway and no real policy solutions at the moment to really address modifications, we have a real challenge with just dealing with these vacant properties and the negative impacts they have on whole communities. In addition to the problems related to the local tax base that gets lost from vacant properties, you know, the existing families that are staying in those neighborhoods stand to lose enormous amounts of wealth, and as I see, their property values drop as well. So we're working with the Congress and with organizations from, you know, civil rights all the way to the community development movement to say, we can't forget about these neighborhoods, and we need to find wholesale solutions to deal with these vacant properties. The $4 billion will help in that effort, but we need solutions, working with servicers and banks, because they need to be able to sell these properties to mission-oriented organizations that will rehabilitate them and help provide affordable rental and homeownership opportunities for families that are in those communities and for those families that might have lost their homes.
Good. Thank you very much, Ms. Solis. Let's give her a hand. Thank you for the good work you're doing. We'll go to the audience again. You have 20 seconds for your question.
Good morning. My name is Gloria Dulan-Wilson, and as a former affordable housing coordinator and executive of a program in Brooklyn, one of the things that I can say is that over the past eight years, and this is something I don't know has been mentioned, there's been a big problem with HUD under this administration. And I don't know if many of you housing counselors, coordinators, or homeowners have noticed that HUD has retrenched from providing the safety net, the information, the training that's necessary for people who are to be homeowners. So I'm concerned, and I want to know what can be done or should be done in terms of HUD. My suggestion had been to scrap it and start all over again, because putting even the abandoned homes in HUD's hands to rehabilitate them for the low- and moderate-income families has not worked because the prices have been jacked up to market rate. Anybody that's gone to try to bid on a HUD home knows that that's the same case. So I'm asking for recommendations, and I'm also asking that the scrutiny be put on how Alfonso Jackson left HUD and what can be done in the future. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for your questions. Any thoughts on HUD? Yes, Ms. Solis.
I'll just talk about one program that HUD has run effectively. It's a small program and needs to be really expanded, and that is called the Asset Control Area Program. Frankly, thanks to the leadership of Congress, back in the '90s when FHA was the owner, now we have sort of the servicers and the banking industry as the owner of many of these foreclosed properties. Back in those days, FHA had a significant portfolio of foreclosed properties in African-American and low-income communities across the country. We fought hard with Congress to say, the federal government has an obligation to discount these properties, to work with local cities, qualified nonprofit organizations in a concentrated way to target those properties and put them back into the hands of communities. And so the Asset Control Area Program is one model that does exist, needs to be expanded, and is something that can be learned from at HUD. And we're encouraging HUD to... What makes it work is HUD doesn't have much to do with it. They turn it over to local cities and nonprofits, who are then able to rehabilitate them and put them back into productive use.
You know, I'll offer, thank you for the comment. I'll offer a comment, but first, I'm pleased to recognize Gwen Moore, member of the CBC, Congresswoman for the great state of Wisconsin. Gwen Moore. Welcome, Gwen Moore, from the great state of Wisconsin. One perspective I have is that it's shocking to me that in all of the discussions, the Housing Recovery Act, the new bailout, whose essence is housing, very few people in here can give us the name of the HUD secretary. And it seems to me that the HUD secretary ought to be with the Treasury Secretary in shaping this initiative, because as cabinet members, they are co-equals. Where is HUD in the discussions? Maybe they're there behind the scenes. I don't see it. And I think that's a very interesting question about the way in which this bailout slash rescue plan is being confectioned and being described. I think what we have to focus on is what kind of HUD do we want in the future? Is it time to look at the very, very essence of the Department of Housing and Urban Development to retool it? It's 40 years old now. To retool it for the 21st century, to give it the tools that it needs, to reexamine all of the programs so that the things that work can be expanded, the things that do not work can be shelved. It's that time in American history. I don't think that we need to be wedded to the approaches of the past as we look at the problems of the future. So that's my thought about the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Let's go here to the audience.
Good morning. My name is Ingrid Fields from Los Angeles, California. My question, I think, is mostly directed at Mr. Bowman. You spoke about alternative mortgages for people that are falling into foreclosure or are almost in foreclosure. My question is for the person who is not in foreclosure but struggling every month to pay their mortgage to maintain their good credit. Do they qualify for these mortgages as well? And if they do, will it affect their credit?
Not at this point. The modification program that I described earlier is primarily targeted toward borrowers who are already behind on their loans and who are in the portfolios of financial institutions that the FDIC now controls. So when we go in and take over an institution and we see this portfolio of delinquent loans, that's the strategy we're using to save those homeowners.
Good. Thank you.
What if they're not delinquent, but you are struggling every month? Because we all know that good credit is something that is, I mean, it's needed today.
If your loan is in one of those portfolios, the team is willing to talk and work with you about it.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Griffin, you're the president of Home Free USA, and in all of this, you, your organization focuses on affordable housing. Against the backdrop of what we've been talking about today, what are your thoughts about the future, the fix, the solutions that we need to embrace?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and Home Free USA is an organization that I started 13 years ago. My objective in starting Home Free USA was really to significantly increase homeownership in the minority community. The reality is, as we look at the future, what we really need to overcome our foreclosure issues, and maybe not overcome, but just help, because we're dealing with about 500 people who have one foot in the foreclosure door a month. And we are a HUD-approved intermediary, just like the Urban League. And really, there are only three black HUD intermediaries that are really entrenched in the African-American community, making a difference. One of the issues that we have to overcome in our community, and this is why we're here and the Urban League are here, we have to be better informed. We have to know what's happening. We have to know how to work the situation with these lenders. And I will say to the lady who was just speaking there, that one thing that I would suggest to any of you who is having difficulty with your mortgage, whether it's now or you have had difficulty, don't waste time dealing with these lenders on the telephone, because you'll be on the telephone for hours and hours and hours with unproductive time. Call a nonprofit HUD-approved counseling organization like ours, and I have 91 affiliates across the country, there are many other organizations, but we have links with lenders. So it's going to be easier for us to try to work out a modification for you than it is for yourself, you know, to do it on your own. So we just encourage you to, certainly you can come to homefreeusa.org and find all of our affiliates. You can go to hud.gov. You can call any of the Urban Leagues. But we really need some assistance, some support, to work these, the situation out with the Urban League, with the lenders. I will tell you that with one major lender in this country, we couldn't hardly even get a telephone. get a telephone call back from them.